Excellent, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Is everybody ready? Thank you. It is October 3rd and this is the regular city council meeting. Thank you all for joining us. It's nice to see some familiar faces in the audience. We are going to start with a roll call, please, Ben.
Counselor Bossmans. Mayor Pro Tem Buell.
Here.
Counselor Woodruff.
Here.
Counselor Yazi.
Here.
And Mayor Yusef.
Here. And I will just note for the record that we have Chief Brammer joining us tonight. Thank you, Chief, for sitting in for our city manager, Jose Madrigal, who is attending a conference today and has already had a pre-excused absence with council. So with that, I will have the introduction of the translator, please.
Hi, everyone. Diego Pons here once again with my colleague Sam Guzman on behalf of the CLC. As always, thank you for having us here.
Do we have the translator?
Towards language justice. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes. Thank you for joining us.
Okay. You can hear my audio okay now?
Yes, it's working.
Okay. So we'll continue doing language justice so people can have the space where they can participate and engage in the language of their heart, just simply the language they feel most comfortable in. We'll continue using simultaneous interpretation to help create the space in English and in Spanish. As always, after I say this in English, I'll repeat in Spanish. Then at that moment, we start with the interpretation. Once interpretation is on, please be on the lookout for the interpretation globe icon. That'll pop up at the bottom right-hand corner of your computer screen. Please select that globe icon. This is interpretation when it pops up and please select to prefer language. And if you're joining the meeting on your cell phone or your tablet, please be on the lookout for the more button or the three dots button to select to prefer language this other way. If you're not fully bilingual, as always, we strongly encourage people to select the preferred language. So you can use the interpretation in case anyone were to speak in the opposite language. And if you're bilingual, then just feel free to listen to everyone in their original language. And as always, just a special reminder, please pay attention to the speech in which you're speaking. Just please make sure you're speaking at a conversational pace and please make sure you don't pick up your reading speed. So thank you for that. Buenas tardes a todos y todas. Mi nombre es Diego Pons. Estoy aquí hoy con mi colega Sam Guzman de parte de la cooperativa comunitaria de la justicia del lenguaje, el CIOC. Gracias como siempre por invitarnos hoy a su reunión donde nos hemos comprometido a servir la justicia del lenguaje. Eso quiere decir que queremos crear un espacio para que todos puedan participar e involucrarse en el idioma a su corazón. Simplemente el idioma en el que todas las personas se sientan más cómodas. Vamos a continuar hoy utilizando la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom para crear ese espacio en inglés y en español. Cuando yo termine decir esto, se va a activar la interpretación. Ya cuando se activa la interpretación, usted va a poder ver un icono de un globo de la tierra que irá a interpretación ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Le vamos a pedir que, por favor, seleccione ese icono del globo de la tierra y que, por favor, seleccione su idioma preferido. Pero si usted está asistiendo hoy a la reunión en su celular o en su tableta, por favor, busquen las opciones que dicen more, que quiere decir más, o posiblemente el botón de tres puntos para que pueda seleccionar su idioma preferido de esta otra manera. Si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le vamos a aconsejar que seleccione su idioma preferido para que pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Si usted sigue es bilingüe, sientas libres de escuchar a todos hoy en su idioma original y eso es todo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Now we're moving on to opening remarks by mayor and council. Council, do you have any? Okay, I do. We have Durango High School with us today and I'm gonna ask Hazel Seashore to please join us at the podium. She will be presenting about what's the happenings at Durango High School for us.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name again is Hazel Seashore and I am the executive vice president of the student body at Durango High School. The start of the school year has been pretty busy, so I'm just here to give you guys an update on what is happening. So primarily, the DHS Health Science Pathway has courses for students that are pursuing health careers. Students get to earn certificates and complete internships through this program. And we are very excited to announce the opening of the Demon Medical Lab, which is a lab that mimics a hospital and clinic setting so that students can get a hands-on and immersive experience. The DHS choirs have been invited to participate in Sing the World, which is an international choir festival hosted by World Strides Inc. and Walt Disney. Sing the World will take place from April 26th through April 30th, 2024. On October 5th, the DHS Chapter of National Art Honor Society has inducted thirty new members into their chapter. And the Green Team is helping coordinate Bike to School Week this Wednesday, the 4th, being National Bike to School Work or School, Bike to School or Work Day. The DHS Outdoor Education Class went on a three-day, two-night backpacking trip to ice lakes. And they learned and applied plenty of skills and concepts, including the seven principles of leave no trace. The DHS Troop 1096 will be performing their theatrical season this year with The Hobbit, which opens on November 3rd. They will also be performing You're in Town and You Can't Take It With You this year. The DHS Red Pride Marching Band has finished their show and are having a showcase on October 14th at 6:00 PM, which is open to the public. The Interact Club has made cards for Mercy Hospital and their patients last Monday. They're planning on creating art murals throughout DHS to decrease vandalism and promote kindness. FCA, or Fellowship of Christian Athletes, will be hosting a Field of Faith night at Fort Lewis on October 11th at 6:30, which is also open to the public. And lastly, DHS Student Council has been working hard on organizing a homecoming this year. The theme is "Out of This World" and it will begin on October 16th and go until closing on October 21st. We will be having our second annual homecoming parade on Wednesday, October 18th on Main Avenue, and we would love for the community to show up. We are also organizing a tailgate that Friday right before the DHS football game. So this is an opportunity for clubs and activities to promote their organizations and raise money as well. And the entire community is welcome to enjoy the games and goodies before tailgate to celebrate kickoff. And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for letting us know what's going on at DHS. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We hope that we hear from you much more regularly as the year progresses. Thanks. And it sounds like October is a year of celebrations and just I'm sure everybody is hopefully all aware, but on October 19th, after the parade for DHS on the 18th, we will have a parade for Sep Kus and celebration, which is so exciting. 3:30 PM, it starts at Buckley Park Parade to follow afterwards and then celebration after that. So we're very excited for that. Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to presentations and proclamations. Actually, we're gonna have a presentation on the Soil Community Garden with Mr. McLean and Charlie Love. And I understand that after the presentation, you'll have some speakers. Okay, fine. Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Scott McLean with Parks and Recreation and here is Charlie Love with School District 9R and the Soil Outdoor Lab and Community Gardens. And just wanted to provide an informational update on what's been happening up at the gardens. Our partnership with School District 9R fits in with our mission and a collaboration with regional partners to improve the quality of life for our community and supports the mission or the vision, I'm sorry, with the management of our city resources in a fiscally responsible, environmental and socially sustainable manner. Can we kind of just give you a quick intro and then turn it over to Charlie? We were talking a little bit about project background, how the community garden came to be, where it's at. This is the first season that the Soil Garden has been in place. Charlie will talk a little bit about that and then also chat on future plans. So just real quick before I turn it over to Charlie, a little bit about how the community gardens fits in with Parks and Recreation and what we do. So in 2020, Parks and Recreation City completed our Parks Open Space Trails Recreation Master Plan. As part of that community outreach, we did a survey to the community. And out of thirty-one items that were identified as priorities, Community Gardens rated fourth for our top priority and investment for recreation facilities. And then 10th as most important to recreation facility that how it folds. And this is a trend that we're seeing nationwide with community gardens, park and recreations being went together. We see community gardens as providing a different type of recreation for the community. Also an opportunity for community to get engaged with each other and their neighbors. So with that, I want to turn over to Charlie and let him talk a bit more about how the project came to be and where we're at. So, thank you.
I'm Charlie Love. I'm the project manager for the Soil Outdoor Learning Lab with Durango School District 9R. Wanted to first just thank city council, Scott McLean, and the other city staff who have first of all invited us here today and then also supported the Soil Outdoor Learning Lab for the past year, helping it be the success that it's coming to be. So I've had the privilege for the past ten years of being a teacher, science teacher of elementary school children at the Ohana Kulianna Community Garden, which for that time was the only community garden in the city of Durango. During that time, I was really surprised by the benefits of unpredicted benefits, unforeseen benefits of having a school garden program embedded within a community garden. It kind of went both ways. The community members really benefited and appreciated having the children in the garden and the kids learned a lot working side by side with the community members. So it was really disappointing when the community garden was scheduled to close in 2020. And as a result, there's just a lot of people that wanted to perpetuate or recreate that situation that we had for ten years in the Oké Garden. So that led to a community-engaged design process, which involved the gardeners and it also involved a lot of experts from the community, district staff and administration, a lot of relevant organizations and community leaders. Durango Parks and Recreation was a natural fit. And then a whole lot of students from the school district as well. So out of that design process emerged a lot of really wild ideas, which I won't go into now, but it's pretty entertaining what when you ask people to write about, draw, discuss their dream garden, I come up with some pretty cool stuff. It was really inspiring to see. We were able to take those ideas, synthesize them, distill them into what has become the concept and framework for the Soil Outdoor Learning Lab. So if you haven't been there to visit the Soil Lab, it's on the, we hope you'll come. It's up on the Riverview Elementary School campus, outlined there in pink. In the upper left, there's the old Ohana Kulianna Community Garden. And where, before we built the community garden portion of this project, it was really just a empty field, rocks, weeds, dirt, underutilized, and you'll see what we've transformed it into. So this site plan shows the vision that was developed through that community-engaged process. There's six phases to the Soil Outdoor Learning Lab with an idea of building a phase per year over the next six years. And each phase brings unique and profound, profound opportunities to the district, the school district, students throughout the region, as well as community members. So I'm not going to go into details about these phases just for the amount of time we have, but we'll touch on the first three phases, the community garden, the grow dome and the hub. So we were able to raise $460,000 to build the community garden over the past year through donations from individual donors, about twenty business sponsors, funding from the city of Durango and a collaborative grant that we received funding from. And then as far as operations, that's also split between the school district and the city with the school district funding a, my position, taking me out of the classroom and allowing me to focus on building out these phases, developing curriculum that can benefit and actually hosting field trips and programs for students from across the region, which we've been doing. So, let's see. The city has provided funding for a garden manager position. That's been totally necessary for the amount of success that we've had in serving needs for the community that align with the Parks and Rec vision and priorities. So since the groundbreaking less than a year ago, we've been able to complete over ninety percent of the construction goals, just a small punch list of things to finish up on. One of the big deals was getting the utilities in. So we got a new electrical service, a new water line, and so now we have 700 feet of buried utilities that go through the garden and extend out to all those future phases. So we're ready to, to build all six of these phases, at least as far as the utilities go. And while the garden was in operation, since after its opening on June 1st, we constructed a pavilion that really ties this space together and have seen thousands of pounds of edible produce come out of the garden. So during the first season, we've had about six hundred, actually, it's probably closer to a thousand community members event through the garden, just based on what we've done in the last week there. That includes the fifty garden beds that are available for rent through Parks and Recreation to individuals and families. And then also we've had two hundred and twenty-seven volunteers volunteering seven hundred and thirty-two hours of time. With our garden manager, Allison, focusing a lot of her work on community outreach, we've been able to organize several successful events this past summer. And then we've also hosted a wide range of educational programs as well for both the school district and a diverse range of organizations. We plan to drastically expand the amount of programming, both for the schools, local organizations and the community next year. So this phase, the hub, was intended to be built this coming year in 2024 due to some delays with, in part, delays with the GOCO grant process due to some staff turnover with GOCO. We've pushed back the timeline construction for this phase to 2025. This is probably the phase I'm the most excited about. The rendering you see here is really outdated and doesn't even begin to capture the scope of innovative features and the unique opportunities for community members that we've dreamed up. But there will be a lot of hands-on educational stations that would be accessible to community members as well as students. And that'll be for all the phases, but particularly, there's a lot of great opportunity in this hub phase because this is an area that'll be open to the public. It'll be a park-like atmosphere. So I'm really excited about that. I'd actually love an opportunity to come back and just present about this space and provide some details about the design features, the specific benefits and opportunities for the community, and then some potential funding mechanisms, including the GOCO grant that we've been pursuing and matching funds from the city Parks and Rec. So with the hub getting pushed back a year, we've decided to move up the grow dome construction timeline and try to build this in 2024 with construction beginning in the spring. And this is probably gonna be the most sort of innovative and technological advance of the phases. We currently have some funding in place for building this and some ideas about how to raise the rest of the funds. I think this, of all the phases, this is probably the most attractive to funders just because of its kind of curb appeal and then also it would instantly take us from being a seasonal facility to a place where we could have year-round programming. Based on recent feedback, like in the last week, from city staff, we're not asking the city to help with funding construction of this phase. It will serve the community in a lot of great ways, but probably not as much as the hub. So we're agreeing with the city staff that let's focus the city funding on our request there on the hub is probably a little bit more relevant. So to provide some additional insights and perspective, we have Dr. Karen Chester, the 9R superintendent, who has been really opened the door for this whole thing when she first came on as superintendent. And then following her will be Allison Reader, our Soil Community Garden Manager, and then finally Rod Barker, who has been a major financial sponsor and visionary for the Soil Program from the onset. So without further ado, Dr. Karen Chester.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing us to come and sort of brag on this project that truly is one of the kind in the nation. I've always said, when we talk about this program, that it's a superintendent's dream to have a teacher like Charlie, who not only has these big dreams, but really has a network to make it happen, who has a vision. I mean, who would have thought he would have been able to raise almost a half a million dollars from private donors in one year to make something that was sort of sketched out on paper transform into an amazing learning space that's multi-generational. And so that's just what I wanted to focus on is not only is this open for all of our students, for example, all the second graders just went on field trips there last week. But it's not just for our students. It's also for college students, college interns who come down, especially in the areas of environmental education, environmental science, natural resources. It's for our high school students who are in agriculture, natural resources, actually working in the garden. And it's really focused on making sure that the next generation of our citizens in the city of Durango, in our community and our county, really care about our earth, really care about sustainability. We know that's vitally important to the community. And when we passed our bond, that was the number one question that people had. So we've had a sustainability committee. I know you all also do that work. And so if we're going to make sure that the, the people who are our future leaders have the skills they need and the values and the benefits, we want to make sure that they have an opportunity like this. So a great opportunity also to show how a city and a school district can partner, as well as a college and like the Southwest Colorado Education Collaborative. We actually have a national virtual site visit coming on October 25th because we've been identified as one of the most innovative programs in the country. And so anyway, I wanted to thank you all and also just really encourage the rest, all of our community to, to come on out and benefit from this amazing program.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for letting us all come. My name is Allison Readerer. I am the garden manager at the Soil Outdoor Learning Lab and a very proud Durango resident. I'm here specifically to highlight how the Soil Outdoor Learning Lab offers unique and meaningful opportunities for community members to both benefit from and contribute to a really special space for everyone in our community. So yes, we have fifty garden beds that total 2,400 feet of growing space for our community gardeners. But the impacts for the community are much farther reaching than those fifty people. So I'm gonna share three brief stories with you that kind of piggyback off of what Dr. Chester was saying about different impacts to individuals who are not actually gardeners in our space, but have been positively, positively impacted by the space. So first up, you may remember a longstanding Durango restaurant called Cousina Linda. Linda Eisley, a longtime Durango resident, owned and operated that restaurant for many years, pouring her heart and soul into our dishes that both nourished her neighbors and represented her culture of origin. She closed the restaurant in 2015 due to family circumstances and lost the opportunity to share her culinary gifts and culture with her neighbors. That is, until one fateful morning when she happened to walk by the Soil Outdoor Learning Lab and ask me about the project. Now, before I dive any further into this, this is something that happens tens, fifteen, twenty times a day. Where we're located, we have a lot of community members walk by every single day, all day. So I'll never forget seeing her eyes light up as she heard about our mission, vision and goals. And this is a pretty common theme, but she couldn't get the words out fast enough. How can I get involved? How can I help? One thing led to another. In this past weekend, Linda was able to utilize hundreds of pounds of our grown, our garden harvest to prepare delicious food for our grand opening party. She made Mexican cornbread with roasted palano peppers, tomatillo salsa and her herb-marinated cherry tomatoes. Linda has been able to reignite her passion for cooking and sharing her culture with her neighbors because the Soil Learning Lab, Soil Outdoor Learning Lab exists. Now, not all impacted community members are longstanding Durango residents like Linda. Jamie Izzy is a Fort Lewis College senior studying environmental science who completed an internship with the Soil Outdoor Learning Lab over the summer. In that time, Jamie immersed herself in all aspects of garden construction and operations, so much so that she has been offered funding to replicate the community and education garden that we've created up here in her hometown of Crown Point, New Mexico. That is after she graduates this coming spring. So Jamie has been able to explore her passions for regenerative agriculture and create plans to bring the Soil Lab concept to her hometown because the Soil Outdoor Learning Lab exists. My last story is about a second grader at Riverview named Otis, who this weekend taught his grandfather how to make a fresh garden pizza with edible flowers, tomatoes or basil and pepper? A little bit of pepper and onion. And this is just an example of that multi-generational education and communication and collaboration that can happen. So the Soil Learn, Outdoor Learning Lab is on a mission to educate community members about sustainable and healthy growing practices directly through public education and community-facing programming. While we have a host of workshops, seminars and public events in the works, our current capacity is focused on reaching our most vocal and enthusiastic community members, which are our children. And in that, we've hosted multiple second grade field trips, are preparing to welcome fifth graders. And in the spring, we'll be welcoming kindergartners, first graders, third graders. be welcoming kindergartners, first graders, third graders, fourth graders, and classes and groups from middle schools and the high school alike. So just imagine that interaction between Otis and his grandfather multiplied thousands of times over, where these students come to the garden, they learn, and then they go and share with their community members, family, friends, caregivers, anyone that interacts within the community. So Otis had this chance to teach his grandfather how to make a garden pizza with edible flowers because the Soil Outdoor Learning Lab exists. These are those three examples, but many more exist of the ripple effects of this amazing space in our community. Not only that it has started to have, well, has started to create and will only continue to create in the years to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rod Barker, and many of you know me for all the years that I put in at the Strater Hotel. One of the things that really turns me on about this town is the wonderful amounts of collaboration. And as a part of that, I helped fund or co-founded the Business Improvement District. I've supported the Cowboy Gathering, the Celtic Gathering, the Bluegrass Meltdown, and many other things. But I can't say that any one of them excites me more than what I see going on right now with this community garden. This has the ability, I think, to be a world-class event and facility. Imagine Epcot. Years and years ago, I went to Epcot, and they had this huge hydroponic section. And I was just in awe, as were my kids, my whole family. And I thought, good Lord, this is just an amazing thing. Perhaps there's some way that we can get something like this more close to Durango, or maybe even in Durango. And as I start to look at what we've got coming up here with this Soil Lab, which is really so much more than soil, it's about entertainment, it's about culinary, and it's about agriculture. And all of those things are starting to come together. This 40-foot geodesic dome will give kids and adults the ability to walk into something that is just live with energy all year round. I have this vision that we could create a world-class culinary training center so that some of our best Durango chefs, as well as international chefs, could come in and teach people how to cook different things, whether it's the regional fair or French cuisine, using the things that are grown here locally. As you know, a community, whether you're in France, or in Italy, or wherever, part of what is the culture of those areas is the food that is grown there. So you think Italy, you have so many things that come to mind, the same with France, same here. And as we start to grow, and our restaurant community is so powerful and so strong, imagine how much training we could give to kids and even adults who want to learn that next level of being themselves a great cook or even a chef. There are business opportunities that I can imagine, too, for these young kids that walk into a 40-foot geodesic dome and learn about hydroponics and the symbiotic relationship with tilapia and other things. Imagine those businesses that might get started in our own community and the kids that can live here for what we're about to do. As long as I've been here, and it's been over 40 years since I've come back to Durango, this is one of those truly exciting adventures. And I'm so proud to see the collaboration with 9R and the city and the people that came from the Ohana Kulianna Gardens. The entertainment that happens with that, it's kind of like a catalyst for people to socialize, get together, let their guards down, and just vision something that's really beautiful. So my wife and I have put in over $100,000. That's how much we think this is a good idea. So we're not just passively standing by to say, you know, rah. We're saying, by golly, this is really, really worth it. So I hope you do, too. And I hope that you see, along with me and the 9R board, what a great thing this is going to be in the next five to 10 years. It's going to blow people away. It's just amazing. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much. Any comments from council?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, actually. Thank you for the presentation. It was really great seeing you at the grand opening. I think seeing the place as it's been growing and with all the plants and all the food, as well as eating the food, was pretty nice. I had a couple of small questions. You have $25,000 that came from the city, but your total funds for the community garden was $460,000, plus all the volunteer work and everything. Is that correct? Oh, looking wrong there. And then the dome, in the agenda package, it says you had asked for $50,000. But what is the total cost of the dome? And you already have the dome acquired, it said.
Yeah, the constructional budget at $175,000. We have, the dome is worth 53 of that thousand. We have a grant application that will be submitting by the end of this month for $72,000, leaving $50,000 left to raise.
And that's planned for next year?
Correct.
Okay. And then for staff, more question. What have we included in the draft budget? For these items?
So in the 23 budget, we had $25,000 that pays for the manager of the gardens and increasing that to $33,333 for a 24 proposed budget to increase the time from nine months to a full year, just with this being the first year. And staff really found out that there was a lot of prep work that needed to be done ahead of time, getting things in the brochure so that we can have in our Parks and Recreation brochure. So but that getting out to the public before summer, but there's advantage having a 12-month position.
And then for the dome, the $50,000 that they asked for, is there anything allocated for that in the budget?
There is not. So we did talk about that, both with the garden and with the staff. And there's a couple of different opportunities for us to partner on a grant. And it felt like the hub was more appropriate and that it's open to the public all the time, whereas the dome would have limited hours. Just felt like it was a better fit for our public entity.
My last comment is more comment.
Okay.
Is to have maybe staff, finance staff, make sure that we bring it up during the budget retreat.
I was just gonna say.
We are aware of what staff has not included in the budgets.
I was just gonna say, we will have the conversations that you have around the budget during our budget retreat.
Yeah.
And that would be the appropriate time to ask those kind of questions. This is more of just a presentation. So any other comments from council?
Being in food and beverage, I truly understand that few things connect a community better than food. And so to see a project like this start with a vision and an idea, to see it be brought forth to completion, especially that has multi-generational impact. I think what a great opportunity to really expose a bunch of our people, our community members, to food production, you know? Not often we get to highlight the actual process of food production in the city and county. And it's really cool to highlight the people that are doing this on a day-to-day basis, but doing it in a way that's, you know, proactive and engaging and trying to teach curriculum to the 9R students as well. So super excited. Thank you.
I just want to say how amazing it's been seeing you and your role from when my boys were in your science class, and they are now a junior and sophomore in high school down at the OK Gardens. And I have photos of Sawyer with you down there to now and what it is and what you have, you know, brought to our community and up to our neighborhood up there. So thank you so much. And it's such, it's such a wonderful spot. And I look forward to seeing the growth and what you have in store for us. So thank you.
Well, thank you for your big effort. And I really appreciate the fact that you're teaching our community how to, you know, grow their food and also get their hands in the soil. So I would also encourage maybe a little bit of input on zero weed production by watching out for the weeds and the seeds so we don't contaminate all our flowers and our plants and our gardens. Okay, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you to all of you involved. It's exciting to see such great collaboration. Our students learn in so many different ways. And it's nice to be able to get hands dirty and experience on the job. And it creates passion in our students in so many different ways. So I really appreciate all that you all are doing, working together. And thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate it.
While we're here, one question I have is about, like, I guess, just procedurally, like, what would be a good follow-up to continued discussions about like, how we can collaborate for the hub phase? And I ask that because there's a, the next round of funding, we're going to actually skip the next round for the GOCO funding. But the following one would be January 24th.
Great.
I'd like to kind of get the discussion going ahead of that deadline, so we can have that line.
Absolutely. Definitely stay in touch with our city manager, Jose. And he will keep us all apprised and inform us when he needs to.
Okay.
Appropriate. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Great to see everybody. All right. With that, we're going to move on to city manager updates. Chief Brammer.
I have no updates.
No updates.
City manager.
Okay, okay. Then we will move on to committee, board, and liaison reports. Counselors? Who would like to start?
I think the only one I had was the Economic Development Alliance Summit. Yes, which a few of us attended. And I just, you know, wanted to give props to Mike French and his staff. And it was very well done. And the speakers were great and inspirational and informative. And I think it was like a day of just great collaboration and, yeah, informative. So yes, if you attended.
Thank you. Great.
Yeah, same. We were at the, who was the Economic Development Alliance? You were there, too? Yeah. Yeah, it was good. I was at the Soil Grand Opening as well. That was a very interesting event. I had office hours I will send today, and I will send an email follow-up on that. And then there was a Region 9 meeting on the 28th of September that covered the financial reports. This is a lot of financial stuff. So Business Loan Fund, and then Program Reports that include Scape, Enterprise Zones, Regional Projects, and Economic Development. And the meeting was finished with the Southwest Colorado Council of Governments Board of Directors meeting.
Great. Thank you, Council Yasi.
On what, September 27th, I was on the Committee to Select the Next Fire Chief, and I participated in that. And they had a really great process to interview the candidates. They had three candidates selected, and we submitted our questions. And then they had about, I think, three different panels who asked the same questions, and everybody rated it. And I thought it was a really complete process. And they selected Randy Black for their next fire chief, and I was really happy about that. So I was real satisfied with their process of having a very inclusive selection of all community members with some board members. And it was really good. Plus, we also had a library board meeting. And I gave a compliment to Luke that he was at the employee picnic, giving us a big, a big happy time being the emcee there. And we also talked about if we had any problems with people wanting to eliminate some of the books at the library. Trying to promote the friends of the library because they, with our library community. And that's about all.
Thank you. I wanted, first of all, we had the YPODS tour of the city office. That was really, this is the Young Professionals of Durango. Very well-attended group of individuals that joined us, and they wanted to learn more about city government. We spoke and we gave them a tour of City Hall. So that went really well. Well, again, well-attended meeting. I also had the first Mayor's Youth Advisory Council meeting at Durango High School, which was a great first meeting, well-attended as well. Another great group of motivated participants this year. Ben Florine is their mentor and lead with the city, and he does a great job. So this first meeting was more administrative in nature, but it was really great to see the students that are participating. They're very motivated to do some good work this year. We had the Durango Mesa Park ribbon cutting, great celebration. You probably saw it in the paper, very well-attended. And I did want to just announce that the city of Durango is seeking applicants for the Florida 15th and 3rd Intersection Focus Group. This group will review public input, consult alternatives, data, and other feedback, and provide objective feedback. So there will be three meetings for this focus group in October. And they are seeking applicants for this group. Go to durangogov.org for more information. They're looking for five participants that live in the vicinity of the intersection to help us with this focus group. I also had an Airport Commission meeting. Mostly what I wanted to talk to council about is that non-construction gave their construction estimates for the Airport Terminal Expansion 1B. And like usual, those construction estimates came in 3 million higher in overall construction costs than anticipated due to inflation, subcontractor availability, and changes in design. So significantly higher than anticipated. They were expecting 26 million. It came in at 29 million. So it was a bit of a shock to the airport team. And staff has been looking at cost reductions through value engineering to address this. So they are doing a good job at keeping the majority of the designs intact that needed to be intact for design and consistency and materials. But they are looking at some changes to address this overage. They still remain in very solid financial position, but this was, like I said, a little bit shocking for the whole entire group. They're maintaining square footage, though, and key finishes. So they are, and they remain, they're still targeting summer of 2024 for this Terminal Expansion 1B. And they look to finalize the construction documents in December, get this passed in January by council, and then they will look at getting a maximum price in February. So I just wanted to give council an update on that meeting. And with that, we will move on.
Can I ask a question on one of the items you gave an update on? You said there's a focus group that's established for 13th Florida and and 15th, 13th, sorry. Three months ago, I asked council to establish a working group for that specific topic, for that specific area, and there was no council support. And I was just wondering, what, who, and how was this focus group established?
I think you can follow up with Jose on that. That was a staff-directed focus group, and this is coming from staff.
Oh, okay. So we have, as a council, we don't.
Correct.
Okay.
One more thing I forgot to mention, that Council Yasi and I attended the first Engage Durango session. I totally missed that. And Chief gave a presentation about, you know, what's been going on with crime statistics, both in like the state and then in Durango, and efforts that they're doing. And then every ELT leader had a table, and then the public could go around and ask questions to all of our ELTs. And I feel like there was 30 people. Yes, nailed it. 30 people in attendance. And it was, yeah, everyone said that it was great, and they enjoyed it. So the next one, I think, is in November. Great. Okay, perfect. There you go.
Excellent. Thank you for that. That was important. All right. With that, we will move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment? Thank you. This is for This is for public comment on Agenda Items 8, 9, and 11. And this is, we are going to limit public comment to three minutes. We will not respond from the dais normally. And when you come to the podium, if you could please state your name and whether you are a resident of the city. And we will start with Donna, please.
Thank you very much. I'm here tonight. My name is Donna Rowe and I do live in the city of Durango. And I am here tonight representing Neighbors in Need Alliance, Nina. And Nina's vision is for everyone to have access to safe housing. And I, my purpose in coming today is to urge you to approve the resolution for the residences at Durango, the Best Western. We've been wondering and wondering in the community about what's going on with the Best Western. Why is nothing being done? Are we going to be able to move ahead? And so now, today, we understand why there has been that delay. And Eva and her staff and the legal staff here have been working diligently, as you all know, for two months, for two months, to try to resolve some issues, some tax issues around the financing for this very, very important project. And again, as you all know, this, the need for low-income housing, I don't need to speak to you about that. It's in your strategic plan. It's an important priority for the city and you have Eva on staff to help work toward housing for workforce and low-income housing. And this project, even if when you, when you approved it tonight, the financing, so that it can move ahead, will not be finished till 2025. And there is such a desperate need from firefighters, from teachers, from domestic violence victims, from so, so many in our community, that this is a big gap in our services. And just please consider the hard work that's been done, the importance of moving ahead quickly. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone who would like to comment virtually?
Yes, Mayor, I have Elizabeth Salkind, who has raised her hand.
Great, thank you.
Hi, don't know if you can see me or hear me. I'll just be quick. Elizabeth Salkind from Housing Solutions. And Housing Solutions is not a participant, participant in the Best Western. So I was asked to speak more about the funding structure and maybe the comfort level there. So I mean, I guess what I would say is that light tech and these types of structures, not only are they common, but they're really the primary source of funding at the federal level to promote affordable housing. And most of you probably understand the basics of the structure. But, you know, the investors receive a tax credit, you know, in exchange for an initial investment. And, you know, essentially, I'm summarizing here, a dollar for dollar essentially reduction in their federal tax liability for contributing. And while it's complicated and frustrating and a lot of other adjectives that I won't use in this meeting, it really is what's driving affordable housing construction nationwide. And that's, you know, a federal decision. This project, unlike the ones that I've been involved with, is a 4%. And a 4% is less money invested, so non-competitive essentially type of amount of money. And it goes into the funding structure as part of that capital stack. So it becomes a percentage of the cost of, in this case, a rehabilitation remodel plus a portion of a new build. So, you know, maybe I, I'm not directly involved in their budgeting, but, you know, maybe 30% or somewhere along those lines of the, excuse me, the overall budget. So it is really good to see our community have a project that's a 4% project. Or as Sparrow was a 9%. So I would just speak kind of in support of the structure and a comfort level with the structure. And a governmental entity does provide a partnership in these types of deals. When we did a Sparrow, actually, Monozuma County Housing Authority was our governmental partner. And that brings about some tax benefits. So it is essential to have that partnership with the governmental entity, no matter who your developers are. So I would just speak in support of a comfort level with this type of financial arrangement and ask for your support of it.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other comments? Or individuals?
Yes, we have Ryan Kelly. I will allow them.
Good evening. This is Ryan Kelly. I'm with TWG Development. So I just want to, first of all, say thank you to the city and the, and the steps they've taken. I think that was just commented on. This is a 4% transaction, which is a little unique in a, you know, more rural area than others. And so a lot of these deals you see getting done in Colorado Springs, Fort Collins, Denver, those places. So I think without the, you know, participation of the city and staff, we would not be here. And so I, I think kudos to you guys. You know, a lot of times we see affordable housing as a strategic plan item, a comprehensive plan item, but there's no action, right? So you guys took the precedence on yourselves and say, we're gonna do this. And so it's roughly a $35 million project. About 14 million of that comes from the federal, federal credits. There's about $11 million loan and then the other funding sources are partially what's come above you guys today. And then there's about another five and a half million from the State Department of Housing. So you guys are about 10% of this capital stack. And I know that Eva, during the work session, maybe discussed kind of the structure, but it's, it's very typical. These structures cannot accept grant funds. And so either a not-for-profit municipal entity becomes the conduit for those. And so just want to, want to share my appreciation for the support of the city. We would not be here without you. These things are complicated. I just rattled off three or four, you know, items in the capital stack. So these things take some time. There's tax-exempt bonds from the state level that's needed. And so I, I'm really excited about what you guys are gonna be able to do. I think this is gonna be the first hotel conversion of scale through this program. And so I know the, the states really looked at this project. But to be able to add new construction units on top of that, it's gonna be phenomenal. So just want to kind of tell you guys, TWG Development's based out of Indianapolis. We do this around the country. We're in about 20 states. But this is one of the more complicated deals. So just want to say, share my appreciation with everybody here and, and ask for your support tonight. This is kind of the last piece in. So once we get this hopefully approved, we'll be off to the races and closing Make This Reality. So just want to say thank you guys for hearing this out.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Any other commenters?
Yes, next we have John Peterson.
Hello, City Council. My name is John Peterson. I'm an attorney with Winthrop and Weinstein. And our firm represents developers who are nonprofits, housing authorities, towns, and for-profits. And in this case, we are representing TWG Development. But I wanted to just thank you all for your consideration and flexibility in working with Eva and her team in the financing that we are proposed to have approved in front of you this evening. The, the creativity of your team has been very, very helpful. We represent developers in roughly 20% of all the affordable housing that occurs in the state of Colorado each year and, and have done other projects down in, in the, your area. And we really understand that these types of transactions for those that don't do them every day are very complicated and in some cases don't make a lot of sense. But I, I wanted to reiterate what some of the other speakers have said, that the form of the transaction that we have in front of you with a, a grant being made to the city and a loan structure coming in that facilitates the development of affordable housing and eliminates a very, very significant tax inefficiencies that would apply if there was a straight grant structure is, is really critical to this development and to the way that this project is being put together. And, and even her team have really done just a tremendous job of navigating that, understanding it. And, and we've worked with her very, very closely in terms of just helping to make this complicated structure understandable. And so with that, we just ask for your approval of the financing structure that's in front of you. And certainly we would entertain any questions that may arise in your approval process in terms of what the structure of the financing is and, and how it was put together. I know that was already addressed at the study session. But, but we're here to answer any final questions too. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Looks like we might have one more? Or? Okay, that, that will conclude our public comment section for Agenda Items. With that, then we will move on to the consent agenda. May we please have a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item 8.1.1 is approval of minutes for the City Council Regular Meeting from September 19th, 2023. Under 8.2, first reading, or final reading of ordinances, under 8.2.1, we have the final reading of Ordinance O 2023 16, approving the annexation and initial zoning for the ZIC, ZIC addition annexation to the City of Durango and declaring an effective date. Item 8.2.2 is final reading of Ordinance O 2023 17, amending Chapter 11, Health and Sanitation, Article 4, Stream Pollution of the Municipal Code pertaining to Waste and Flash Flood Exposure Within Public Stream Riparian Zones and Flood Plains by adding Section 11-74, unlawful presence and activities as follows. And then there are no adoption of resolutions by consent. And under Item 8.4, Approval of Other Administrative Items, under 8.4.1, we have approval of the Business Improvement District Proposed 2024 Budget and Operating Plan. 8.4.2 is approval of a new, a new tavern liquor license for Lum 2 LLC Doing Business as Skyridge Soap &amp; Suds at 100 Jenkin Ranch Road, Unit A2. And then under Item 8.5, Land Use and Development Action Items, under 8.5.1, we have authorizing the mayor to sign the Animus City Park Overlook Phase 2 Final As Built Platte.
Thank you so much, Ben. Do we have any counselor that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I would like to remove 822.
Any other item? Okay, may I have a motion from council, please?
Sure, moved.
Motion from council to approve the items with the exception of 8.2.2.
I'll second.
Maybe we have a roll call, please?
Yes, and before I do the roll call, I just want to notate that Counselor Bosmans did come into the meeting at 5:31 PM. So I'll include him in the roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
I am, this is the ordinance for the pollution along rivers and so on. I made my comments two weeks ago. I don't have to repeat them, I think. I don't support the resolution. So if any other counselor, because you are in majority in favor of this one, would like the motion, then I'll vote no.
I was looking at something else. Okay, I'll move to pass. Adopt, thank you. I'll move to adopt the final reading of Ordinance O-2023-0017, amending Chapter 11, Health and Sanitation, Article 4, Stream and Pollution of the Municipal Code pertaining to Waste and Flash Flood Exposure Within Public Stream Riparian Zones and Flood Plains by adding Section 11.74, Unlawful Presence and Activities as follows, ES and R.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion from council. I, seeing none, I will just add that I see the importance of protecting our rivers and water supply with this ordinance for our clean drinking water needs as rivers are our primary source of fresh water for drinking to the health of our diverse ecosystems, including fish, plants, and wildlife. And protecting these ecosystems is essential to preserving biodiversity for agriculture and food supply and for our recreation and tourism, as tourism provides boating, fishing, swimming, and wildlife watching. So there's economic rivers, economic impacts around healthy rivers and so many other reasons that river health is important to our community and every community locally and globally, really. So I think that this is a very important issue for everyone and I look forward to, roll call, please.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Buehl?
Yes.
And Counselor Bosmans?
Nope.
Motion carries. Okay, with that, moving on to item number 11. Resolutions, Consideration of Adoption. I guess we have Eva joining us for this.
Good evening. Eva Henson, Housing Innovation Manager. We will be discussing a resolution for the residences at Durango, primarily for the financing structure. As we discussed earlier this afternoon, the resolution would be approving the financing structure for residences at Durango regarding the Affordable Housing Development Incentives Grant and Congressional Funds and authorizing the execution of documents that pertain to that structure. In particular, the residences at Durango is a low-income housing tax credit project that will target several of the strategic goals that council has established, including the economic opportunity, I'm sorry, affordability and economic opportunity objective, the enhanced livability and sense of place, and financial excellence and high-performing government. For a little bit of background for the public as well as for City Council, the city activated putting the Best Western originally under contract back in the fall of 2021 and therefore released a request for proposals for an affordable housing developer. From there, there were proposals submitted and the award was identified for TWG Development, a real estate development company headquartered in Indianapolis, who also has a presence in Colorado. The city then assigned in February of 2022, and I was fairly new in my role coming before you with that resolution, as well as assigning that contract over to the developer and therefore taking the city out of that structure. Within that resolution back in 2022, that structured that TWD would, TWG would actually be reimbursing the city for expenditures that were actually part of that original earnest money, part of the real estate contract, as well as some of that due diligence money. All of that, when the hotel was acquired in November of 2022, has been reimbursed to the city in its entirety and in full. So at that point, the city didn't have any additional funds within this project. From there, the project would become an adaptive reuse. This is the first of its kind with this large at scale of 120 units for motel conversion. It's complicated. It's complex. And we've put a lot of collaboration and time into this to get us here this evening. And so certainly you guys may have some questions as we sort of go through this tonight. But again, that's 120 affordable housing units identified at or below 60% of the area median income, which for a two-person household is about $49,920, which is about a $22 an hour position, give or take. The household could earn a little bit less, could earn a little bit more. Talking about the project timeline, so this has come before council in several different aspects of the project for transparency and for public community engagement. Again, we talked about the city assigning the real estate contract to TWG. We've also done assignment of the private activity bond allocation the city receives. The city was awarded a three million dollar congressional fund through the Congressional Direct Spending Act that is backed by Senator Hickenlooper and Senator Bennett specifically for the residences at Durango. T W G acquired the Best Western motel in November. The city also went after grant monies through the Innovative Affordable Housing Incentives Grant Program that's established through the Department of Local Affairs. Um, and we were awarded another one million dollars, so total four million dollars in grant funds for this very specific and key project for our community. From there, this financing structure and this modification to a loan would be before you tonight with this resolution. The issuance of building permits are ready to go. So we are that close tonight with this very big milestone before you. Um, from there, construction would commence this year. With construction being completed, I, you know, again, these are all ballparks with construction and weather, but ideally targeting early twenty twenty-five. We talked a little bit about study session with the loan structure for the one million dollar grant as well as the three million dollar grant. This is important because this makes this project feasible. This makes the financing stack realistic for this project to be vertical and create units that are so needed for our community. From that, we have groundbreaking celebrations scheduled uh, for the residences at Durango that would be on site, uh, Friday, October twenty-seventh at ten A M. I'll leave it open for some questions. And then the recommended motion for city council.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, do we have a motion from council?
I'll move to approve the resolution approving the financing structure for residences at Durango regarding the Affordable Housing Development Incentives Grant and congressional funds and authorizing execution of documents.
Second.
Thank you. Um, all right, we will have council discussion now and/or questions. We'll start with, um, five minutes, uh, each for counselors, and if there are, uh, is there's a need to respond to council comments, then we'll have an additional three after that. We'll start with five minutes for counselors. Any comments or questions?
Uh, first off, um, holy smokes, what a heavy lift to try to just even wrap my head around reading the documents, much less put the documents together to really fully understand the scope of this. So thank you for everybody that's had their hand in getting this prepared. Um, so, uh, really excited about this. Um, so we have two of these grants moving forward. Do we anticipate applying for any other grants in two thousand and twenty-four? Or is this kind of for, for this project, or will this be the, the only grants that we will apply, apply for, for this?
At this time, no, the city isn't looking for additional funding for this particular project.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments, questions?
I'll, uh, I'll give it a shot. Thank you, Ava. I first thank you for what you have done here, and I, it was a resident of the Riverview Mobile Home Park when that was being sold. Um, not you, that was before your time. They, they told me sometimes you get caught up in the details and you want to focus on the big picture, and in this case, we're adding needed units. So it's good to see that those low-income units will be available, and, um, they are very much needed. So I have some comments and they'll end up being positive, so hopefully you'll bear with me a little bit. The resolution is for a loan. And instead of, uh, T W G accepting a loan of, uh, four million after taxes, two point four million. It makes more sense to them to have a loan at one percent of, sorry. Instead of them accepting a grant of two point four million, which is after taxes, it makes more sense to them to have a loan at one percent interest rate and a payment of the full four million principal after forty years. So that makes me think this is a very interesting business concept, that entity chooses that approach. And so I did a little research on T W G, and are they online as well? Okay, great, because I, hopefully they can confirm what I think I understand of their concept here. And because they do it throughout the country, yeah? So in this case, they buy an asset uh, of seventy-two units where it started off with, seventy-two units at seven dollar, seven million dollars. And we had estimated, that was before your time, Ava, two million renovations, which equals a cost per unit of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. Then, uh, they come along and they added forty-eight units and at a cost that seems to maximize the use of grants and activity bonds and loans, pretty much the whole amount, uh, and keeping their own exposure probably as low as possible. And they end up with a total cost of thirty-five million. The increase in cost, thirty-five million versus nine million, for an additional forty-eight units, means the each added unit costs five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Okay. I am, I'm guessing that they rent models to assure that the cost of that investment, being mostly loans and bonds and grants and everything, can be carried by the return on their rental income along with ongoing financial support from the federal, state, and local level, which is housing vouchers, rental assistance, and the like. And then if they construct this within two years, I assume they will get an immediate, uh, return on their, uh, for their company. Um, and we as a city also get money because if the grant is structured as a loan, we get one percent on money that was a grant that we would have passed through in the first place. So it seems like win-win, yeah? And looking at a worst-case scenario, in case something goes wrong with the asset, the actually Best Western or the rental market, the exposure to T W G is very limited because it's all structured as loans and grants, so. Uh, and we as a city also have limited exposure because this is a grant that we were given and we pass on to them as a loan. So in the end, we don't lose much there either. And so I, I see that, I, I hope I understood this correctly. This is a very interesting business model there. And if, if anything goes wrong, would be the general taxpayers that funded in the first place, all the money in grants and, and all those things or the private activity bonds. Is that, do I understand that whole concept correctly? And this is a question for T W G.
Yeah, I can take this. This is, this is Ryan Kelly. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, good. So you're right, it is an interesting business model because we, we, uh, have a division that also builds market rate housing and it's, it's much different. So you're spot on. When we essentially get those tax credits, it's, it's within a partnership. We then take those tax credits and sell that to a banker investor. And so those investors are looking for two things, uh, losses from depreciation and the value of the tax credits. What they don't want is other income that, that they're not used to getting or expecting to get. So that's why these are always structured as a loan versus a grant is because, uh, on a market rate deal, we basically would build that and then sell it and reap a return or a yield. On the light tech world or affordable housing world, it's a little opposite of that. You're taking a long-term risk for a developer fee, and then you have obligations to rent and, and qualify tenants, and we've got a lot of people, you know, reviewing those on an annual basis. So it's, it is a much different business model, but you're spot on. Would it make sense in reality to, to take a long-term loan versus a grant? The answer is no. With the exception of the affordable housing project where we don't really have the capacity to pay a tax bill on day one, so basically it's spread out over that time. So, uh, you're spot on. Your analysis is, in, in a general world, that would not make sense. You know, light take transaction, it's about the only option, uh, to get these deals to work. Hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, it's very interesting. In the end, we all win, I guess. If, if nothing goes wrong, we all win. So housing is there. Money comes in.
Other counselors? Counsel Yazi? Oh, sorry.
Oh. Yes, this financing is really creative, and I do appreciate, um, all the effort that went into, um, creating this opportunity to provide affordable and attainable housing for our workforce and people who need to be able to have somewhere to live. So to do that, you know, they spent, what, a couple of years trying to figure out all the loopholes and how to grant turn into loans and how people get rebates on tax credits and other pieces of financing to make it affordable for the builders to build affordable housing. So I think this is excellent, and I'm really, um, proud of the fact that Eva, you, you worked this out. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just kind of echo the same. Two years ago, when this was brought up, um, to council, I was excited about it then, and it was only seventy units. Uh, potentially, we didn't actually know what it was, but of, you know, affordable, low income, we weren't quite sure the vision, what it was going to be, but the idea behind it was there. And we know we needed it, and we still need it to this day, and the work you've put in and your creativity and then finding partners, um, to help build this vision out to now have a hundred and twenty affordable units is amazing, and I'm so excited, and it's going to be such an asset to our community, and it's so needed. And so I stood behind it from when it first got introduced and the Best Western went up for sale, and I stand behind it today. And so just thank you so much for your continued effort and hard work. And I hope there's more creativity coming out of you for future projects, um, now that this one's going.
Far into this evening, and, uh, yes, we'll continue the good work.
Thank you, Eva.
I, that well said, Mayor Pro Tem Bule, and, um, I really appreciate the hard work, um, that's gone into this, um, and the uh, creative financing structures that are, everybody's working to get into place. Um, I see this is definitely a very effective means of increasing our housing supply, um, addressing housing shortages. Um, this is kind of rapid implementation of units that we can convert. Um, I see it as support for populations in need of housing. Um, I think it creates a better mixed income communities, um, and, um, having that variety, uh, in our community, in our city of Durango. The public-private partnership is, um, uh, it's obviously essential, uh, in something such as this, and and to provide more housing stability for members in need of our community is just, uh, it's a, it's a wonderful thing that we have, um, ahead of us. So I just wanted to thank you as well. Um, and with that, I think we can have a roll call, please, Ben.
Counsel Yazi?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counsel Bosmans?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number twelve, first reading of ordinances. Um, we're starting with twelve point one, um, and I will pass that to Mr. Morgan.
I, I don't have any particular comment or presentation on it. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions once the motion's on the floor.
And just to be clear for the record, this is a, um, an ordinance enacting a standing order regarding the prohibition of firearms and other deadly weapons in city buildings. Do we have a, um, any comments for this? Do we?
You get a motion in a second, and then you can take public comment.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve ordinance, approve the first reading of the ordinance enacting a standing order regarding the prohibition of firearms and other deadly weapons in city buildings.
Second.
Great, um, now we will open the public hearing and have public comments. Do we have any?
Um, and so, uh, this is twelve point one.
This is twelve point one just for, just for this item.
Yeah, and no one had signed up on this one or the other general public comment.
Okay, anything, anyone virtually, just to be sure. Doesn't look like it. Okay. Um, all right, then, council discussion. It doesn't appear that we have any. May we have a roll call, please?
Counsel Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Counsel Woodruff?
Yes.
Counsel Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Yusef?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to twelve point two, a public hearing to consider an ordinance approving the cross right-of-way abandonment request. Uh, do we have a staff presentation for this? Yes, Bryce, hi.
All right, so yes, I'm here to present the cross right-of-way abandonment request. The applicant Ben Cross has requested that the city abandon approximately ten feet of right-of-way on the south side of East Fifth Street between East Eighth Avenue and East Ninth Avenue. Um, this area of right-of-way is adjacent to the applicant's property at eight sixty-eight East Fifth Street. Uh, if approved, the right-of-way abandonment, uh, request will proceed, uh, to a final reading of the ordinance at the October seventeenth city council meeting. Uh, this is a context map to give you an idea of where the project is. Um, you can see here, uh, is Park Elementary. This is the Gayg Lane Gulch Road going up the hill to the college. And this area here in red, um, is the area that would be abandoned. I can get a zoomed-in view of it here for you. Um, so that represents the ten feet of right-of-way that would be abandoned across the south side of East Fifth Street between those two, uh, streets. Um, it is in alignment with the comprehensive plan, um, uh, and it does not conflict with any of the priorities laid out in the comprehensive plan. That was one of the standards needed to be met by the Land Use Development Code. Um, as far as the strategic plan, uh, it broadly aligns with our enhanced livability and sense of place goal um, by providing more livable space that may be improved by the residents involved here on that block face. Um, for our findings, the, the request complies with the Land Use and Development Code standards, uh, the comprehensive plan and strategic plan. Uh, staff is in support of the request as the local street, uh, section only requires sixty feet of right-of-way. Um, and seventy feet will still remain for this street. Um, and you can see the recommended motion there on the screen. I'll open it back to you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the proposed ordinance for the crossway abandonment with the findings and conditions as outlined in the staff report and discussed at this public hearing.
Second.
Excellent. Do we have any, um, no public comment? Again, just to be sure, okay? Uh, so I close the public hearing, uh, council discussion. Go ahead, Gilbert.
I was curious, did you have a public neighborhood, um, hearing for this?
Uh, did not, but it was required that each of the residents that are, are gaining the ten feet of right-of-way have signed a neighborhood petition. So they, they did meet and organize, uh, in order to do this, um, but there was not a staff meeting for the neighborhood.
And was there a reason not to have a public meeting on this?
Uh, it, it is not a requirement for the right-of-way abandonment, um. And so, yeah, it, it wasn't found to be needed. Uh, the impacted residents will, were all notified and, and had to sign on for the petition.
And technically, this is a public hearing where anyone had an objection could come and comment.
Yeah, I, thank you for the brief presentation. I had some questions last time, and, um, we saw a public comment on, um, I'm not sure if this is private or not, but, uh, on the, um, abandonment of a right-of-way on the other side of the street, why not do it on both sides? Um, I'll just ask you a more general question. Is it one property owner that can for his own property ask for an abandonment, or does it have to be the whole street site of that block?
It's normally staff policy to, to do a whole block face if it's going to be done at all. Um, so that's what we had told the applicant. Um, he needed this space in order to fit a garage on his property. Um, and in order to get, there's ten feet of right-of-way that seem, it's pretty obvious when you look at the property lines that there's quite a bit of room between where the property line is and where the curb is. Um, so he inquired about that possibility, and, um, in conversation with this city engineer, um, we decided that we would, um, require him to get the rest of that block face to sign off on the idea as well. Um, it's really, it's a, it's a gift for them, so it was not, um, uh, entirely difficult for him to do that. Um, but yes, he did have to go down, um, to each of the property owners on that block side and have them sign up on the petition.
And you, you only do one side of the block. You don't always do both sides of the street?
Uh, not always. Um, it did complicate things a little bit. I can come back a little bit, uh, to the map here. On the other side of the street, uh, they have a detached sidewalk, uh, set up, and if we were to do an abandonment on that side, we would then have, uh, city facilities going through private property, um, which would complicate, um, the rest of that block. Um, so rather than get into that, um, we felt that it was, it was enough just to ask that he get the rest of the owners on his side of the street, um, to buy into that because they have an attached sidewalk, um, running on that side, so that can continue, um, while not interfering with private property.
So, so the, if, if this, I'm going to just take this street as an example. In, in ten years from now, you could have this street having one side of the street, a sidewalk along the street. And on the other side, across the street, you would have a berm, I guess, or what you call it, a median, and then a sidewalk.
Correct, yes.
Interesting. And what prevents any city owner, any property owner to tell the people on this? Interesting. And what prevents any city owner, any property owner to tell the people on this block, I want to get rid of the right-of-way?
On the other side?
In our whole city. If anybody says, oh, man, I have a property here, let's get a signature from all my neighbors and let's abandon this right-of-way. Is there anything that stops us? Because in this case, we have an easement is what I was told. So there was no restriction. Maybe, maybe not the right person to ask.
We do have required street sections that need to be met. And so that, that gets to my other point here. So yeah, there, there is a requirement for sixty feet of right-of-way for local street classifications. This, that's the lowest street classification that we have in Durango. So having ten feet in, in, in extra, I guess, is enough to feel, let our city engineer feel comfortable in allowing this. It does have to go through him. So if it were a request to take it down to fifty-five feet, that would be an easy no. But since there's room left in what our street, streetscape requirements are, our street section requirements are, he felt okay moving forward with this.
Good. Well, thank you for explaining that. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
And Counselor Yazi?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number thirteen, public comment on non-agenda related items. Okay, it looks like we have one individual. Okay, thank you. It looks like we have an individual that would like to speak. This is for general public comments on items that we have not considered during the business meeting. We limit comments to three minutes, public, and we will not normally respond from the dais. Please direct your comments to council and please state your name and if you're a resident of the city.
My name is Alex Widow and I am a resident of the city of Durango. Proud one. I, I guess just wanted to bring up a couple of thoughts I've had. I've been attending a few meetings over the last couple of months. And yeah, one thing that stays at the top of mind is the council voted just under two years ago to a very ambitious emissions, greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal of fifty percent by twenty thirty compared to our twenty sixteen levels and then a hundred percent by twenty fifty. And I just don't know specifically where we're at. I don't know if council knows where we're at or like our city just specifically. I have a lot of trust in them, you know, where that Marty Pools on top of, you know, a lot of things. I guess just emissions, I would like, you know, more up-to-date kind of knowledge on where we're at specifically with emissions and more funding dedicated to climate action work. I know Marty Pool's position is paid for by a fee that we pay on our utility bills, or that's how I understand it, which is kind of odd because their utilities are, you know, funded or just like totally invested into oil and gas, over fifty percent of that anyways. So why is our sustainability department being funded by utilities? So I guess I'm just understanding, you know, as part of my own organization's green team, you know, there's tons of different aspects to do medium to long term or take medium to long-term action on climate change. And we need much more than Marty Pool and I believe one, one intern for the city working on these sorts of projects. And so that's why I'm here today is just to encourage to continue to invest into these long-term climate action projects. There's this idea of, of the green premium where we must pay more today to actually burden ourselves with the cost of the impact of our decisions today instead of dealing with those costs in the future. So I hope that we, you know, kind of account for and are willing to pay and invest into those green premiums looking forward and consider that at the budget retreat happening next week. I also attended the, or was listening to the study session earlier. This is a separate comment. We need more funding for climate action. I'll, I'll, you know, postmark that or end that one. I do support Access's core program with the different officers and behavioral health experts. I believe they mentioned ideally we could use three officers and three behavioral health experts. Why, yeah, let's do that. I'm in support of that. And then two weeks ago, I believe we also talked about the logo and the cost of that. I don't see that costing more than a couple hundred bucks or a thousand dollars. I'm in support of it. I also think it could be a cool opportunity to like redo our flag and like maybe have it separate from the, the logo and could like, you know, engage local artists and like, you know, do a kind of cool way to connect everyone there and maybe give a grant or something as it relates to that. So I don't know. I think it'd be awesome to have a, an awesome like modern, cool-looking flag. So, and logo. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other, anyone who would like to comment virtually? It doesn't look like it? Just wondering. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item number fourteen, introduction of ordinances and requests for public hearings. Item fourteen point one is a request for a public hearing to review the proposed twelve thirty-five and twelve ninety-five Camino del Rio Downtown Fire Station Powerhouse Minor Subdivision Preliminary Plan. And this would be considered on October seventeenth. Scott, did you want to say something briefly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is a request to set the public hearing for your next regularly scheduled meeting and we'll come back with a much more detailed presentation at that time, should you choose to set the public hearing for the next meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from council?
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for review of the twelve thirty-five and twelve ninety-five Camino del Rio Downtown Fire Station and Powerhouse Minor Subdivision Preliminary Plan on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any limited discussion from council?
Well, there's no data provided, so I, I, there's not much to talk about.
It's just an introduction. Okay, then seeing none others, I will request a roll call, please.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Buell?
Yes.
And Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number fifteen, other new business. Do, does any counselor have any new business items? I was gonna just bring up the fact I had mentioned to council in an email about the concept or idea of considering potentially free bus service for October nineteenth for the Sep Kousse Celebration and Parade. Just knowing that this might be one of our bigger events that we host, I was wondering if we might be able to consider some type of free bus service to encourage people not to bring their cars downtown and to take free transportation. One of the questions I did have is how late the bus service runs and if that would be an option to get people home if they were to take the bus in. So we don't have Jose here, but I wanted to see if there was council support to have staff look into that and various funding options plus potentially through some of our events as well. I don't know. Just.
So it seemed like you have a little bit of a timing issue, right?
Right.
Because the next meeting on the seventeenth and the event's on the nineteenth.
Yeah.
I just recommend that you make a motion to request that the administration provide free bus transportation for that event.
So moved.
I'll second.
Council discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yeah, that's not me. That's not me. I keep going before him. I just.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Buell?
That's me, yes.
Great. Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number sixteen, other matters. Any requests for excused absences? Okay, any directives? Seeing none. Moving on to item number seventeen, executive session. May we have a motion, please?
I move to convene an executive session to receive legal advice regarding possible litigation concerning contract dispute involving JRC Consulting as permitted by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B.
I'll second.
Council discussion. I mean, we have a roll call.
Counselor Bossmans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
And Mayor Youssef?
Yes, thank you.
So just, you need to announce that we, what time we're going out? Did you get it already?
No.
Yes, we ought to make it habit of when we have a successful motion to go into executive session. Before we go, you note the time.
Okay, noting the time of seven oh seven PM, departing for executive session. Thank you. The time is now 7:18 and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Melissa Yusef, Jessica Bule, Dave Woodruff, Olivier Bosmans, Mark Morgan, Chief Brammer, and Gilda Yazi. For the record, council met in an executive session to receive legal advice regarding possible litigation concerning a contract dispute involving JRC Consulting as permitted by CRS 24-6-4024B. For the record, if any participant who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, I will look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to direct the city attorney to settle the potential litigation as an executive session.
Second.
Council discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Yusef?
Yes.
Counselor Yazi?
Yes.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bule?
Yes.
Counselor Bosmans?
Yes.
Excellent. With that, we will conclude the meeting. Meeting is adjourned.